Because of the COVID pandemic. But with that, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved, Drew Dixon.
Second, Logan Skerritt.
Great, we have a motion and a second. I'll run through a roll call, as is our tradition on these types of calls. So Tracy?
Aye.
Drew?
Drew Dixon, aye.
John?
Aye, John Carlson, aye.
Vicky?
Vicky Hager, aye.
Tim?
Tim Logan Skerritt, present.
Uh, Bill?
Bill Soderlund, aye.
Great, thank you. Ben Leonard, aye. So motion carries. I don't know, Dr. Olson, if the district received any requests to speak on any agenda items? Or if we had any before the meeting started?
Not that I'm aware of. Sarah might have heard something, but I we haven't communicated about that. We haven't heard about that.
But Sarah's on the, on the line recording this meeting?
I am here and I have not heard of anything.
Great, thank you. If you do have a request to speak to an agenda item, maybe put that in the chat box. But we'll, we'll go right into action items now. The first action item is consider approval of the Hoffman Learning Center staffing plan for the 2020-2021 school year. Dr. Olson?
Yes, well, as you are aware, we've had a number of discussions dating back to last fall about some potential changes in the Leo A. Hoffman program. So the Leo A. Hoffman program serves adolescent boys with a number of different disorders or situations. And it's on the basically on the state hospital campus. It's a private nonprofit company. Because that program, it was within the St. Peter School District, we then provide educational services to the roughly 28 boys who are in the program. And we started discussing really last November, the potential that the Leo A. Hoffman Center was going to move to become an adolescent psychiatric residential treatment program. That now has occurred. They now have signed a contract to that regard. And so, as we discussed earlier, that's going to require some adjustments in how we staff the program. So there's a flow chart in your packet that takes a look at the staffing scenario. Basically, what what it is, is the, the changes are these. We would be returning to a lead teacher model to help provide direction for the program. So in, for many years, for probably a 20 or 25 year period, we had the program run by a teacher who had a halftime teaching responsibility and a halftime lead teacher responsibility under the supervision of a licensed principal. In this case, that licensed principal would be Chris Overbolt. Then that position would pair with another halftime position we have and, and to create a fourth classroom, because the potential is to move from 28 students at the Hoffman Learning Center to 40 students at the Hoffman Learning Center. So the other half teacher we have has an assignment of halftime intervention teacher at the Hoffman Learning Center and halftime teacher at the Yap program. The Yap program is the young adult adolescent program that is housed at the security hospital. So that program is, we provide educational services to any of the residents in the security hospital who are between the ages of 18 and 21 and who have not received or completed their high school diploma. So we would have four classrooms. And then because of the potential change in the needs of some of the students, we would be shifting in adding a .33 science teacher, a .33 social studies teacher, a .33 math teacher, and continue with our physical education support in that program. The reason for those positions is that it, within a classroom, there can be quite a variance in terms of academic need and academic ability. And particularly as it moves to the new program, we see that there will be a need to support that program to a greater degree. And then in addition, we would have the equivalent of a 1.0 mental health practitioner. That would, we would have two halftime positions that would be working in the morning in the program. They could be employees that we contract with, with the Leo A. Hoffman Center in order to provide continuity. But it's much like a level five program that we would have in other situations we've had in St. Peter in the past, where you really do need that mental health support in order to be successful with the the students that you're serving. Now, as you're aware, the expenses on a program like that are billable either to state special education funding or to the resident district that the program comes, that the students, excuse me, come from. And/or we would be able to use compensatory revenue that we would receive because all of the students in the Hoffman Learning Center qualify under the free and reduced price lunch application. So that's the proposal. We're looking to start moving forward to either reassign some positions from our current staff or to, in some cases, add some new positions. And I'll stand for any questions that anybody might have. Is Chris, are you on the line, Chris Overbolt? I can see Chris joining us. So, okay. Any questions anybody might have?
This is Tracy Stewie. I have a question. And maybe this has changed. Was this the position that was going to be like halftime? I thought we were talking once upon a time about a position being halftime Hoffman Learning Center, a quarter out at the alternative school, and then .25 special education? Is that?
That would be, that's correct, Tracy. That would be in the counseling position. And that's, that's one, I guess, I didn't mention that. You see that the top, under supervising principal Chris Overbolt, there's a .25 counselor, HLC counselor. We're not sure of exactly the split between the area learning center and the Hoffman Learning Center, but we're marking that as a .25 at this, at this point in time.
Okay. And then the special education part just kind of went away, or?
Do you mean the social worker part?
No, well, I don't know. Maybe I misunderstood what we were doing to begin with. I thought we were doing it, and it was going to be .25, like a special education coordinator.
Oh, yeah. So that's on a, that's a different, that's an embed shift. So embed is shifting to a coordinator model. And of that coordinate, coordinate, excuse me, coordinator model, St. Peter will receive services based on the number of students we have on our caseload. So that's coming from that embed shift to having a K-12 kind of lead coordinator. So we would get those special, that special education case management, if you will, from that coordinator position. But that, that's going to be coming from embed. We're kind of looking at that being probably a half day a week at the and depending upon need at the area learning center.
Okay. I was just, because I was under the assumption that was tied in with this one somehow, so.
And maybe in one of the earlier models, before we were sure about the psychiatric residential treatment program, we probably had discussed that, absolutely.
Okay.
This is Drew Dixon. I can say that the Personnel Committee did look at these proposed changes. The needs are outlined. It appears that this is a solid plan to cover those needs. So we moved to send it to the full board for approval.
Drew, do you want to make a motion?
I'll do that, yes. Drew Dixon, I will move to approve the changes for the Hoffman Learning Center and the staffing proposed changes for 2020 to 21 school year.
I second it. Vicky Hager seconds it.
Great, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, I'll do a roll call vote. I'll go the other way around this time. So Bill? I'll come back to Bill. Tim?
Tim Logan Skerritt, aye.
Thank you. Vicky?
Vicky Hager, aye.
Thank you. John?
John Carlson, aye.
Thank you. Drew?
Drew Dixon, aye.
Thank you. Tracy?
Tracy Stewie, aye.
Thank you. Bill? Well, I don't hear Bill. Ben Leonard, aye. Regardless, motion carries. So I think we just list Bill as abstained. That'll work. Action item number two, consider approval of area learning center staffing plan for the 2020-2021 school year.
This is another plan that has been in front of you for some time. And actually, I think in, in going way back to an August meeting at the Minnesota Valley Education District, we started talking about the need to provide more services in an alternative learning center classroom approach to our St. Peter High School students. We were also looking at credit recovery in a different model. And that credit recovery model, and Annette, you can jump in here as well, was really designed to move to 26-hour, three, three-week kinds of credit recovery scenarios. As we started to investigate that further, one of the things that we discovered was that the the requirements for operating an area learning center have started to shift and change. So that required us to move into a reapplication process for our area learning center designation through the Minnesota Department of Education. And there are two things that had to happen that we did not have in place in our previous model. The first is that we have to have a middle level or a middle school core day program that really supports learners who need some extra assistance and help in those core academic areas. And really, one of the ideas behind that, and I think a wise idea, is if you can help to provide interventions at an earlier time, particularly in reading and mathematics, you have a better chance of having students be successful when they enter ninth grade and less chance of having students either drop out of school or become credit deficient. So the second thing that we needed to do was to find a partner school district. And we did that, worked through that with the Cleveland Public Schools. We have a partner district. And then that leads us to the proposal that, again, that's been reviewed by the Personnel Committee, which has a couple of components to it. So I'll review through that flow chart as well. Annette has always been, Mrs. Ingeldinger has always been the supervising principal of the area learning center. We would now add that counselor time. Tracy, I think that gets to maybe in part what you were talking about. So there's, and we're again identifying that as a .25 counselor. We're not exactly sure what that time will be. We're looking at a .5 assistant principal, and that gets into, what we talked about at the Personnel Committee, reorganizing one of our current guidance and counseling positions to allow more assistance at the high school and allow one of our high school licensed principals who hasn't been using that licensure to serve as the ALC assistant principal. And then we would add a second Rock Bend High School Alternative Classroom. That's really pretty important because we have a waiting list of anywhere between, Annette, what, 15 to 25 students at any point in time?
Yeah, and then you know, given our students who have joined the or from out of state or even country, they're oftentimes coming to us pretty credit deficient or with gaps in their education. And so, so I would say, say that it's really been within the last couple of years that that number, that waiting list has exploded. And, and we can't, we're having a hard time providing that just via the traditional night school at the high school or via ABE at the community center. So we really think that that, that additional classroom will help get more kids through in a timely manner.
And I think we've, we've done, put some numbers to it. We, we believe conservatively that will keep anywhere from eight to 10 students enrolled in and hopefully on target to graduate as opposed to dropping out or moving to other area learning center high schools, such as the Area Learning Center High School in Mankato. So we'd add that classroom. And then we also need to add some core day middle school intervention time. And part of our budget adjustment plan allows us to shift part of a teaching position to that mathematics intervention. That's an area that still could potentially change. We're working with MDE. As, as you might imagine, the pandemic, the COVID-19 world threw things in for a big loop because we were in the middle of working through all of these items. And boom, we're on a whole different plane. And not only that, but Minnesota Department of Education, their resources are focused on trying to navigate across the state, all of the COVID distance education planning. And so they have been not responding to us as regularly. And quite frankly, it's probably understandable, given the fact that that they're very busy with the whole pandemic approach. But then at the bottom, you see credit recovery and targeted services. So one of the important things that I want to point out is it's essential for the St. Peter School District to retain its status as an area learning center. Because as an area learning center, we're then able to offer targeted services to our kindergarten through eighth grade students who have fallen behind in either reading and/or mathematics. So that allows us to offer after-school programming and summer school programming. If you aren't an area learning center, you have the option of becoming an area, an alternative learning program or an ALP. But in that regard, you may not offer targeted services. And boy, we think that targeted services intervention is essential. So that, that's that proposal. You know, the, the possibility of retaining more students really offsets most of the cost of that program. So can we, can we guarantee that we'll retain those students? No, I don't think you can make a guarantee. But I do think that it's fairly, a fairly solid bet that will retain more students by offering additional services at the high school level. Questions?
John Carlson, Dr. Olson. Is anything at the legislature going to change requirements for the area learning centers? I thought I saw something that was in committee, or I don't know if it came out of committee or what.
I haven't seen that, John, or I haven't tracked that with MSBA. Or that doesn't mean there couldn't be some legislation that's out there. And, you know, again, the changes that were made and shared with us this year, the two that I mentioned, you know, we went through a rigorous application process, and I think 2007 or '08 to become an area learning center. And so then all of a sudden, we have different requirements. So if that happens, the district will need to be nimble and be able to shift to meet those requirements because you know, the only thing might be, John, and I'm not sure about this. There is a requirement like for targeted services, and E.T., help me if I misspeak here, but the targeted services currently have to be offered in a face-to-face setting. And so you aren't able to offer an online or a distance learning targeted services. We certainly hope we'll be back to a face-to-face setting this summer. But if we're not, there would need to be some sort of legislative change that would allow distance learning or online learning. And that's not going to be ideal, obviously, but we hope we can, we can do that.
That might be what I saw. I, I thought the new, the new things that were being brought up in the legislature made it less restrictive or less tough to become an ALC. And that might be one of the things that I interpreted that way, when really it's just the reality of our time right now.
Yep, yep.
Great. Any further discussion? Further initial discussion, I should say? Anyone want to offer a motion in a second?
This is Drew Dixon. I move, we approve the area learning center staffing plan for the 2021 school year.
Thank you, Drew. Vicky, you looked like you were seconding. Do you want to try again?
Okay, Vicky Hager, I'll second.
Excellent, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the roll call vote. Tracy? You are muted. There you go.
Yep. Okay. Tracy Stewie, aye.
Thank you. Drew?
Drew Dixon, aye.
Thank you. John?
John Carlson, aye.
Thank you. Vicky?
Vicky Hager, aye.
Thank you. Tim?
Logan Skerritt, aye.
Thank you. Bill?
Bill Soderlund, aye.
Thank you, Bill. Ben Leonard, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Action item number three, consider approval of the fiscal year 2020 revised budget.
I'll just start out and then let Mr. Regner take over. But the preliminary budget, you need to adopt a preliminary budget in June, right preceding the start of your fiscal year. And as a reminder, a fiscal year for school district, school districts runs from July 1st to June 30th. Then during the year, you are to present and consider for approval by the board, a revised 2019-2020 or fiscal year 2020 budget. The, throughout the year, the Finance Committee and the Board have received a lot of information about the budget. Most of that has been directed at the general fund. But in your revised budget, you'll also hear information and receive information about your community education fund, your food service fund, and your capital projects and other funds as well, reserve funds, et cetera. The Finance Committee received an update on the four-year rollout at their April meeting. And so Tim is here to present you with the revised budget details for our fiscal year 2020 revised budget. So Tim?
Hi, everyone. There should be a couple of pages in your packet. The first one is probably got, you know, numbers one through 74 down the side, which is a listing of all the funds. And then the second page is the rollout that we've talked about, that Dr. Olson mentioned with our number of, number of meetings and things. Kind of just to get started, the, the first line to take a look at is line number 10, the general fund unassigned. That's basically the rollout, the, the general fund and one we spend obviously the most time with because it's, it's by far the biggest and the most funds in it. Column C is basically our, the fund balances as of our last audit, 6/30/2019, with the different fund balances and assigned funds and that, that, those are actual numbers from the 6/30/19 audit. Then, then column D is kind of the revenue for each of the different funds. Column E is expenditures. Column F is kind of transfers between funds and assigned funds. And then column G is the projected fund balance at the end of the year. I'll kind of just focus a little bit to start with on, on line 10. And that, that works with the second page, the rollout, the, the revenues projected. And these are on our SMART accounting system are the actual numbers on there. And this, along with the transfers on the rollout, equal the numbers on the rollout. So we're basically projecting revenues of $26,200,000 and expenditures of $26,500,000. And that matches up with the, the revenues that you've seen on the past. The one change that I did adjust from the rollout, from what you've seen a couple of weeks ago, is on line numbers, this is on the second page, and I don't want to get too deep in the woods here, but line number 206 and line number 231, they're $138,539, which I, which I needed to tie out and to have the SMART system match with the expenditures and revenues on the rollout. So basically, that's our projection. It's the same ending fund balance, the same net because it netted out to zero those two items. So basically, that is tying out the numbers we've been looking at to, to the numbers on SMART, and they increased by less than half a percent total. Lines number basically 14 through about 33 are all part of the general fund that we've kind of assigned. And I know we've talked in the past about assigned, I consider that kind of a, it's like a savings account. It's kind of set aside. Line 10 is the unassigned money. And lines, you know, 14, it's just some, some things with accounting we need to do, you know, non-spendable and things like that. Kind of some of the bigger items are lines 18, which is assigned for severance. That's been there for a number of years for, for people that have severance payments and things that we need to pay out. Signed for VIBA trust is the retirement plan now for the, the teachers that we've talked about. This is the first year we've had since 10 years ago. That was approved. There was some expenditures out of 40. We have about 75 teachers in there and we assign $1,000. So we, we basically fund the amount that's going to be paid out of that. Line 21 is a sign that we've talked about before for the operating for the high school. The infrastructure is line 22, and we're moving that out and basically reassigning that as we've talked for funded appreciation for some improvements and stuff down the road. Because with the capital projects fund going away, which we'll talk to, talk to them a little bit, we don't really have any funds for some capital type replacements. Then a couple of different, the AAA money and the water mitigation funds that have been assigned in the past. And then lines 29 through 33 are basically the activity funds, which this year will be moved out of the general unassigned fund to assigned funds. And that's basically, it's an estimate of about $200,000. We're still, still kind of working on that. It's kind of a long process. So down on, on line 40, whoops.
Tim, excuse me, I just want to make one, one note here on line 23, that assigned for water mitigation, just as a reminder, that is based on the extension of, and I'll, I always forget the name of the township road, but the township road that extends on the west side of the high school property, the Community Spirit Park property, that's a gravel road. The plan is for the city, when funds become available or grants are awarded, to, to pave that and put in, you know, trails and so on and so forth. But that's going to require that they find a way to deal with the water that comes off of the second bluff line and flows through the, the property. So that's, I think, a fairly solid number. But there's going to be an expense for water mitigation to the school district when that road gets extended.
So yes, hopefully we've done a good job of signing funds for when, when things come up like that. The line 40 is kind of the totals of most of the, what we've really got in Fund One. You can see there's a transfer $186,000 going out of that, and we'll, we'll touch on that on just a little bit. But you've got basically your total revenues and total expenditures. And then the, the general fund subtotal, you know, drops down a little bit because the expenditures are projected slightly higher than the revenues. The next kind of items that are, that are fairly important are lines 45 and 46. Lines 45, if you remember, and we try and separate this out, it's actually part of the general fund, but because it's a, it's a big item, we separate that out. And that's the LTFM is line 45. We do have a negative balance when we started the year because of the roof projects. And then basically projecting our revenues and expenditures are ending up there. You'll see that again, I think it's in July, whatever. We have to approve the updated 10, you got to do a 10-year plan every year and we'll be to do a 10-year plan every year, and we'll be working on updating that. Line 46 is kind of also part of the General Fund, but we separate that out because it's for a specific purpose, and that's the operating capital, you can see we started with a fund balance this year of about $200,000, the revenues and expenditures, that includes the payment for the one-to-one and the expenditures on the leases, and that's basically the $186,000 that's transferred from, quote, the unassigned funds to that. Just kind of a note, that $921,000 does include both of the curriculum updates this last year, which was a significant, I think it was over a couple hundred thousand for both of those, so that was a significant expense there, that was, you know, we had the fund balance and the revenue to pay for it out of the year. So then, basically, lines 51 will, will be your, the total General Fund monies, and again, it's about, it's dropping a little bit because of the expenditures being slightly higher than the revenues for the year when everything's taken into account. You know, so basically, lines 10 through 51 are the General Fund 01, but we've got them in a few different funds that crosswalk or move over into the General Fund. I know I kind of went over that fairly quickly, you know, we did spend a lot of time, obviously, with line 10, which is the biggest one, I'll ask if there's any questions on those now before we get to the other funds, you know, we always come back to them too, but. Otherwise, moving down, line 55 is our Food Service Fund or 02, we came into the year with about $300,000 fund balance, we're projecting basically a break even on the revenues and expenditures, and that's how it's been the last couple of years, we've tried to, being that's, that's federal money, it's really, they really tell you what you can and can't spend money for on there, we have been able, with meal transportation and the difference in the COVID this year, you know, our meal distribution and numbers are different, but actually, the, when you add up breakfast and lunch, they're pretty close to the amount of meals we served, breakfasts are up and lunches are down from what we had normally done before March 13th. So, again, it's a little bit of an estimate because of, you know, some of the differences there, but I think it's going to break even to have a slight profit, and if we're able to pay some to the utilities and those type of items, that's what we'll do to use some of that money up and keep it back into the General Fund. Line 58 is Fund 04, the Community Service Fund, we came into the year with about a fund balance of $244,000 over the last few years, last year we broke approximately even on this fund, if you remember the board members that are here, this year, it's probably the one that's been impacted the most by the, the virus and all the situations there. We came into the year basically with a negative, you know, projection on this one, and it's gotten actually a little worse or has gotten worse because of, you know, a few various other items between the virus, losing some scholarships, some other expenses being up, we're projecting a negative, you know, a negative balance for the year from that. You know, some is directly due to the virus, a lot of our revenue comes from things that are kind of like, I don't want to say a retail store, but they're user-based, that if we don't have the programs for the last couple of months, the classes and the SAC and some of the, the school readiness things, we don't get any fees, and our expenses really don't go down a whole lot, they have somewhat, but, you know, that's what we're projecting to kind of have a negative, and we're working with Dr. Olson and even Cammy to try and figure out the next plan for that.
So, Tim, let me just jump in and add a note here, one of the things I think is important to be reminded of is, and I think this was exactly the right thing to do, because we were not sure exactly how an online delivery system or a distance delivery system would work with our, our school readiness program, we continue to offer the school readiness program, but we discontinued charging for the school readiness program. Part of that was also the commitment of the school board to keep everybody employed, so that's just one example of a program where we've continued to employ everybody and dropped our revenue stream, you know, in support of that program. So, just wanted to point that out, I think it was clearly the right thing to do, and when you look at some of these things as you roll through and you're thinking about it, just want to be reminded that whenever we say there's a reason for a fund balance, and the reason for a fund balance is the rainy day, well, it's raining, and so we've got to make sure that we keep that one in mind.
And this is one that, you know, from what I hear from the state, and I think Dr. Olson would hear this too, and the community ed is one that pretty much all the school districts in the state are worried about, just because it's, you know, like I said, it's fee-based, like our SAC program, we haven't any revenue for a couple of months because, because of the virus, so. Moving down to line 61 and 62, 61 is basically the capital projects levy that we had, that this is the last year we were receiving income from, is that, that expired, and that one's going to zero out depending upon the timing of the projects for the summer, which I believe we talked about last month or the month before, that, that, that fund will go away, the capital projects levy, so we may spend all the money this year, we may carry some over the next year depending if the, the projects get completed in June or July. Line 62 is still the remnants of the bond referendum, and again, we're hoping that that money all gets spent this year, their, their marks working hard with trying to clean up the last few contractors and the retainage and those items, and I think they're down to four, five, six, six contractors they're working with to try and just get things straightened out, and hopefully that'll get paid out, and we'll have a zero balance there and that all be cleaned up. The debt redemption.
Tim, just really quickly, just wanted to jump in, the, the other thing to note is, you know, we have had plans to finalize the, all of the projects that were a part of the, the high school building project, and the last kind of piece of that puzzle is the restroom areas at the Community Spirit Park, one adjacent to the, close to the high school and the, some of the soccer slash multi-purpose fields, and the other, on the other corner of the property in the north, or excuse me, yeah, the northwest corner. So we're still working with the city on that, and we'll have to see how that rolls out, I know there's a lot of uncertainty, certainly in our school, in school districts, but in cities and counties and other levels of government, just in terms of the revenue that may or may not be coming in based on our economic situation, so the goal is to have that zeroed out, and we'll have to see how that all plays out.
So, the next line of the next fund is line 65, which is the debt redemption fund 07, basically that came into the year with a balance of $392,000, that's basically the levy that pays for the bond payment, the revenue that comes in is the levy, and expenditure is the bond payment. Again, if you remember, it's typically 5% over the, the payment, so if taxes aren't paid, you got a little bit of a cushion, we do have a little bit of a cushion going into the year, so that's basically that one. Line 69 is our trust funds, and that's basically a couple scholarship programs and donated money that we pay out that needs to be separated, so it's not combined with the unassigned or the school's operating funds. So that's kind of all the different funds that are broken out, you know, there's seven, eight different ones, and then the grand total just kind of adds all the amounts up, and again, the other funds after the General Fund pretty much carry on down what goes in comes out. So I don't know if there's any, any further questions, or I know there's a lot of information in there.
This is Tracy Stewie, I was just curious, any tea, if you probably could answer this question, what, are they still allowing you to bill for the early learning childhood scholarships, or are they saying no?
They are allowing us to submit those invoices, we just received significantly fewer this year, yeah.
I was just curious.
Yeah, that's a great question.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one that, I mean, I hesitate to bring it up, but this is John Carlson, I noticed a lot of districts are furloughing or whatever, their community ed people, just because there's no programs going on right now, and I got upset when I was talking to somebody about it, and they said that rightly or wrongly, they, some, some of the, what they're finding is those people are making as much, and in some weird cases, even more than what they were making when they were employed by the school in unemployment. What, Jeff, has, has there been some talk in the Big South or in any of your superintendent groups about how other districts are handling that?
Yeah, I think, I think most of the districts in the Big South are continuing to try to keep people employed, and, and you're right, that, that is a reality in some cases with unemployment situation, but again, our, our goal is to follow the governor's order, and the guidance from the Minnesota Department of Education was to keep people employed because we're continuing to receive our funding. Now, we're not receiving funding in some of those community ed programs, but the answer that we have given is, we're being loyal to you, and you're going to have a job with us next year, if you have unemployment, you basically would need to be furloughed or eliminated from your position, and then we don't know about bringing people back, so I think that's the approach we've tried to take, and that we're trying to be a good employer, and hopefully people recognize that and stick with us.
Dr. Olson, do we self-insure for unemployment or not?
Tim, yes.
Yes.
So, I, I think, I just want to echo your sentiments, Dr. Olson, that we do want to be a good employer, we have staff that have invested a lot of years in us, and they're quality staff, and, you know, this is, this is going to go on for a while, and it is a big thing, but it will end, and I think we have to, we have to take the short view and the long view as a district, but I think from a dollars and cents perspective too, and I think you're right, Dr. Olson, if you tell someone we should see other people, you can't be mad when they see other people, and, and I think a furlough says just that, that from a dollars and cents standpoint, if we self-insure unemployment, yes, they may get more money, but we're going to put a lot of money into that, and if we carry their insurance, we are also putting, you, you just, when you look at the actual savings that a furlough would bring a district, I don't think that it really would amount to something that we would want to pursue irregardless of being a good employer.
That's a good point, every year on the levy, if you remember, there's a line for the unemployment portion.
And I think that's good, for us to get unemployment insurance, that would be cost prohibitive for, for, for us, it makes sense, but in a situation like this, just there wouldn't be a lot of savings, so I don't know what those other districts do, but.
Correct.
Thank you for clarifying and helping me understand that, because they, the people I was talking to made it seem like they were doing them a favor by furloughing them, and because they would essentially get more money, and, but if the money's coming from us anyways, then that makes no sense.
Right, yep.
All right, we had a lot of initial discussion, do we have a motion and a second?
This is Bill Soderland, I make a motion to approve the revised fiscal year 2020 budget.
Excellent, thank you, Bill.
This is John Carlson, I second.
Thank you, John, we do have a motion in a second, so we'll do a roll call, Tracy?
Tracy Stewie, aye.
Thank you, Drew?
Drew Dixon, aye.
Thank you, John?
John Carlson, aye.
Thank you, Vicky?
Vicky Hager, aye.
Thank you, Tim?
Locust Guard, aye.
Thank you, Tim, Bill?
Bill Soderland, aye.
Thank you, Ben Leonard, aye, motion carries unanimously. We can move on to the consideration of the approval of a contract extension with the District Technology Director, Dr. Olson?
Sure, so this information was shared and discussed in detail with the Negotiations Committee on April 27th, but we extended a one-year contract to Chris Overbaugh, who's our District Technology Director in March, right before all of the stuff hit with the COVID virus. Since that time, we have had a phenomenal response, I think, from our technology department, I just saw some survey results across Minnesota, we're one of the few districts that has been able to put a device, if necessary or needed, in every student's hands, and provide over 100 hotspots for internet access for students in our distance learning plan. And we, we realize because we've done some surveying that that hasn't been a perfect plan, but it's certainly been a monumental effort. The reality is, we don't know what's going to happen as we move into the fall, it's possible that we're back in a traditional setting, and then it's possible that we are back in a distance learning mode in, across Minnesota and the country sometime later in the fall, it could be that we enter into a start of the school year in a different kind of format, maybe it's an every-other-day school with distance learning going on, or it could be that we start the school in a distance learning format, just like we're ending the school year now. In any of those scenarios, it's important that we have continuity in, in internal technology capacity to meet those needs. As I've been out visiting with various superintendents and talking around Minnesota, it's, it's clear that the district technology position is essential, and it's essential to have that position be as stable as possible. So, that led to discussions with Mr. Overbaugh about extending his contract through 2022, 2023, and not only the need for continuity, but also, we've been discussing, and as we had our report from Reinhardt Consulting at our last meeting about enrollment, we have a lot of students who enroll online outside of our district, as an example, 10 of our students enroll in the Worthington Online School. So, we've had discussions about starting to investigate over the next year or so the possibility of the St. Peter Public Schools having a virtual academy, all of that requires someone who understands teaching and learning, but also understands technology and technology capacity. So, with that in mind, we have reached a tentative agreement for a contract extension with the Technology Director, it includes a contract completion incentive, which means that Chris would, or Mr. Overbaugh would need to complete all three years of his contract to receive that incentive, which would be a contribution to his health savings account, a change in, in experience factor that mirrors, and is exactly the same as the principal's contract, and of course, Chris is serving as the principal of the Hoffman Learning Center, the addition of incentive to gain industry certification, in this case, information technology infrastructure, library certification, or ITEL, and then a 3% salary increase in those two years, which is kind of consistent with what we've been doing in, in past contracts. So, I'll stop and see the members of the technology, or excuse me, the Negotiations Committee have anything you want to add there to our discussion from the other day.
Yeah, Ben, and the board, this is Tim Locust Guard, Negotiations Chair, and we talked at length about this contract, and, and the other committee members can certainly weigh in, and I think Dr. Olson hit it on the head when he said it's the continuity of care and the continuity of that, of that technology position moving forward in these times, there's no doubt that we have a big need right now, so we didn't want to rock the boat at all. So, with that being said, I know there'll be further discussion, but I move to, I move to accept the contract for the Technology Director through 2020. put I move to accept the contract for the technology director through 22, 23 year.
This is Tracy Stewie. I'll second that.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Do we have further discussion?
Yeah, I I'm on that committee and I can't even remember. Why is it a three year contract? Does that get it in line with the other principals? Or why did we go with three years?
Okay, he he had a one year contract that got it in line, but really we wanted to get to show the commitment that we were going to be in line with him. It really ties in with the super the new superintendent's contract, which would be a three year contract. So basically, the negotiations for the following biennium for the other employees would be completed for both the superintendent and the district technology director.
Well, I'm sorry, why is I I know the continuity part, but why is it different than the principals, I guess, is I thought we were getting it in line with the principals and then I started thinking about it and.
Yeah, that's a good question, John. The principal and the principals, you can only have a two year contract. So their two year contract ends at the end of next year. So we basically just jumped that process and because you can with other employees, you can move into a three year contract, like a superintendent or a district technology director. So basically just negotiated ahead here to hopefully provide the fact that Chris would be committed to us and we'd be committed to him over the next three years.
And the fact that he is mainly our technology guy and the fact that he's the acting principal at Hoffman, is it?
Yes.
That does not affect that?
No, because he's not under the principal's contract, even though he has a principal licensure.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, this is Vicki Hager, and I have something. I'd like to just say that I think that we're just trying to keep up with the times. I mean, this is just a stepping stone into online classes. And if other people are probably going to be doing it more because of this, I just think it's a great way to do it. I mean, I I'm thinking that we just need to keep up with the times.
Great, thanks, Vicki. Anyone else? All right, we have we have a motion and a second, so we'll start with Bill.
Bill Soderlund, aye.
Thank you, Tim.
Tim Locascard, aye.
Thank you. Vicki?
Vicki Hager, aye.
Thank you. John?
John Carlson, aye.
Thank you, Drew.
Drew Dixon, aye.
Thank you. Tracy?
Tracy Stewie, aye.
Thank you. Ben Leonard, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much, Chris, for everything you've done, and we look forward to working with you for the foreseeable future. So thank you. All right, the next item on our action items is to consider approval of the candidates for graduation, which I think will involve Principal EngelDinger.
Yes, I have a list included in the board book of what I believe are 184 names of students who are currently tentatively going to graduate on March, excuse me, on May 29. Currently, most of them are on track to graduate on time. All students, as you know, have to meet all of the requirements of the state of Minnesota as well as the school board in St. Peter.
So as a high school principal who gets to recommend candidates for graduation, one of whom is her daughter and as a superintendent of schools who gets to recommend that you do that for and one of the candidates for graduation is his grandson. And we have a couple of of other school a school board member and other staff members who have candidates in the graduation list as well. So kind of a fun fun item.
It is. They better be on track, right?
That's right.
But just of interest, we also have two students, and I didn't check the list to see if they were on there, but two students who are who are not in the St. Peter School District, but have been in our school in the buildings for years as part of Jeanne Madsen's autism classroom, who will be joining our Peter students at graduation as well. So we're very proud of those two as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Do we have any?
Mrs. EngelDinger, what percentage of kids that are we graduating this year? Is it like 99% or 100% or how many kids, you know, out of the class, out of the?
You know, we we actually don't get their graduation, the graduation rate for an entire year after graduation. And and currently, that's kind of the way that they that they do that has changed a little bit. So there'll be those who are who we had with us in ninth grade who make it as of May 29. And then they'll do another one who make it a year out. So it takes a little bit of time to do all of that math. And, you know, I hate to talk about it right now. There are always those who we're meeting with on a daily basis to impart the importance of passing every single class that they're currently in.
Pulling them across the finish line?
Dragging them right across that stage. We'll do what we can.
Well, I'm happy to move the approval of this year's candidates for graduation list.
Tracy Stewie will second that.
Great, we have a motion from Drew Dixon and a second from Tracy Stewie. Well, let's start with Bill.
Bill Soderlund, aye.
Thank you, Tim.
Tim Locascard, aye.
Thank you, Vicki.
Vicki Hager, aye.
Thank you. John?
John Carlson, aye.
Thank you. Drew?
Drew Dixon, aye.
Thank you. Tracy?
Tracy Stewie, aye.
Thank you. Ben Leonard, aye. Motion carries unanimously. All right, so yeah, thank you. We are on action item six out of seven. Consider revision to the 2019-2020 school calendar. And this is something that we need to do, but should be fairly fairly quick. So, Dr. Olson?
Yeah, as you know, the governor's executive orders have changed how we operated our school calendar that you adopted earlier, or revised calendar that you adopted earlier. And this reflects the fact that May 1 and May 4 were two planning days, and they were not student days. It also reflects the fact that we're clarifying that we are not having early release days on April 24 and May 15. Those days are instructional days. And it clarifies the fact that the fourth quarter will have 37 student days. Now, one of the things that I just want to make sure we note is that even with the governor's closure period, in terms of accounting and counting, the seven days that were governor's closure days in between March 19 and March 27, and then the two days on May 1 and May 4 actually count as instructional days in terms of funding. So I would recommend your approval of the revision to the 2019-2020 school calendar and and hope we don't have to do it again.
Thank you. Any initial discussion? All right, I would entertain a motion and a second.
Tracy Stewie, I'll make a motion to approve the updated calendar as presented.
Logan Skard, I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll start with you, Tracy.
Tracy Stewie, aye.
Thank you, Drew.
Drew Dixon, aye.
Thank you, John.
John Carlson, aye.
Thank you. Vicki?
Vicki Hager, aye.
Thank you. Tim?
Logan Skard, aye.
Thank you. Bill?
Bill Soderlund, aye.
Thank you. Ben Leonard, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. This is our last action item. Consider approval of the agreement for shared portion of Health Science Academy teacher with Tri-City United Public Schools.
Well, I'll kick it off and just provide a little context and then let Mrs. EngelDinger go from there. We have operated a Health Science Academy, the High Step Medical Sciences Academy in cooperation with the South Central Service Cooperative for probably 10 to 12 years. That program operates in conjunction with River's Edge Hospital and the Benedictine Care Center. And it really has, I think, been a major program in helping to meet a regional employment needs because students can get a certified nursing assistant certification. So it's a diploma plus program. And also really explore the whole medical sciences field in in as a part of that program. Our goal all along has been to have a standalone program. So when we started with the South Central Service Cooperative, we wanted to have that program be standalone. In other words, we'd be able to hire our own teacher. Well, this year we've had a surge in enrollment and not quite enough, however, to to allow us to have our own teacher. And this is where Mrs. EngelDinger, I'll hand it off for the rest of the story.
Yeah, as Dr. Olson gave you a little bit of the background to our High Step Academy, I believe it started in 2006 and was our first academy. And and this year, we've seen an explosion in in numbers for next for the 2021 school year. We've we've usually had anywhere from 10 to 10 or 12 kids per section, I would say. And this year, suddenly, we ran our registration numbers. And I know that in in the in the board book, it says that we have 40 kids who have who have registered for that initial class, medical, that healthcare corps. I believe that's up to like 44 now for St. Peter kids and for our medical terminology class, over 20, and 14 kids who are interested in getting their CNA certification. So at those numbers, it didn't make sense financially to any longer to to go with South Central Service Cooperative's course, $1,000 per course per student. And at the same time, TCU School District saw the same the same thing happening in their registration numbers. And so when working with the assistant principal, Jeff Eppen, and Terry Preisler, the superintendent, we we pooled our pooled our resources and and figured out our master schedule enough so to to share this position with Tri-City United Schools.
So this is what I would call a win-win situation. So if we were to go with South Central Service Cooperative, and they have been a wonderful partner for us, but that cost would would be around $70,000. If we operated our own standalone 0.67 position, assuming we could hire a 0.67 teacher, which would be problematic, our cost would be $54,500. And with our cooperative effort that we're proposing with the Tri-City United School District, it comes in at $44,000. So we would have a 0.54 FTE, TCU would have a 0.46 FTE. We would be the fiscal host and and employ the teacher. But we would have a service provider agreement, which you see in your packet for 2020, 2021, and hopefully beyond. I think this is a kind of partnership that can go a long way to really meet regional employment demand, provide a great experience, continue a great experience for our students. Anything else you want to add, Annette?
Well, I would just add, I know you said that we've been in a it's been a great partnership with the Service Cooperative, and that that doesn't that doesn't end that relationship. They're they're thrilled with with our numbers at St. Peter and at TCU that, like Dr. Olson said, that that was the the point of of being able to start small and and go through the Service Cooperative. And they're they're happy for us and excited to to see us branching out on our own.
This is Tracy Stewie. Have we ever done this with any different, any other classes ever? I mean, or is this kind of our first time that we are employing a teacher, you know, with another school district, so to speak?
We've got a we've got a bit of a history with that, Tracy. That's a good question. We've we've done that with Lee Sore Henderson Schools. We did some exchanging for our advanced placement courses a number of years ago, and they had some welding courses. We've shared a teacher with the Niclet Public Schools in the past. So all of all of them have worked really pretty well, I think. Again, you know, and part of this, I will also say, and Mrs. EngelDinger can add to this, that, you know, hiring a dynamic teacher is important. And if if that teacher can be housed in one of our school systems, and and I'm obviously biased about having the person housed in the St. Peter School System, it really adds a lot to the ability to hire somebody that is going to maybe be a long term person that can even continue to build the program to a greater degree. So it's it's an exciting opportunity, I think.
And then the other question, the other question I had about that, Mrs. EngelDinger, is what's the the emergency medical responder that 25 kids at TCU are taking? Is that just something that we just didn't offer? Or what are they actually, you know, I'm just kind of curious why, you know, what that, do you know what that's about? Or is that something we could look at?
Yeah, I do know. It was an offer through the South Central College as well as the Service Cooperative. And and we are, we have found ourselves flush with elective opportunities for kids right now and and decided to, we decided to wait a year and see how it went over at other schools first. But it had, I think, most of the schools who ended up offering it saw saw pretty high numbers.
Thank you.
This is John Carlson. I have a question. I think the only thing that seems would be more appealing to a quality teacher is if we could hire them, you know, add those classes and hire them and just so that they don't have to travel at all. Has had that been thought about? I get why we're we're saving money, but Tracy just brought up that emergency emergency medical responder. Did we consider that class at all? Or is there a way we could make her 1.0 in our district instead of just 0.54 and a 0.48 with a 30 minute drive?
Well, I would take a full time teacher, but that's that's I guess that's not my call, right?
Yeah, you know, I think really when we look at what we offered of the registration manual that was approved and and the course registrations that came out, I mean, we we have a point, we have enough course registration for a 0.67 position. It well, we could push that that way. So that's a 0.54 position, and that's a good question, John, is because we're sharing the second semester. Which one is it, Annette?
CNA, CNA licensure.
A CNA licensure, and that's a course that really doesn't require the travel as much as it does on a daily basis, as much as it does requiring the coordination with the probably most likely nursing homes to have that those hour experiences. So part of that would probably be an online housed in St. Peter, online to TCU with sometime going to meet the TCU needs in the, you know, setting up those courses and making sure that there's a follow up with the students who are out in the field, so to speak.
And our kids are fortunate that we have those relationships built with Benedictine and Rivers Edge. Angus Davis.
About what's that medical office procedures class? It says PSEO only, and we we don't offer it. What is that class? Is that working at the hospital, kind of like a CNA at a nursing home or?
I guess I'm not sure which course you're.
There's a TCU medical office procedures, PSEO, there are seven of them. I think that's just identifying from TCU's perspective, another course which wouldn't be taught by our person because it's a post-secondary education options, not a concurrent enrollment course. I think that's the answer. Is that correct, Annette?
Yeah, I believe so. And it's probably something offered through South Central College.
Great, thanks.
Great, thank you. We've had some initial discussion. Do we, do we want to have a motion in a second? Or did we have one? I kind of lost track of that.
Well, I don't know, but Tracy Stewie will make a motion.
Thank you, Tracy.
Yeah, no problem, Ben. Anytime.
Tim froze, so he can't make a second.
Vicky Hager.
Vicky, thank you for that second. We have a motion in a second. Do we have any additional conversation? Go ahead, Bill.
Bill Soderland, aye.
All right, thank you, Tim. Tim is frozen. Vicky?
Vicky Hager, aye.
Thank you, John.
John Carlson, aye.
Thank you. Drew?
Drew Dixon, aye.
Thank you. Tracy?
Tracy Stewie, aye.
Thank you. Tim?
Yeah, my in and out, so I'm back.
Awesome.
I meant to say aye, and I did have some discussion on this. So I just wanted to say that there, this is a, a area that I think is absolutely exploding. So I, pop me off right before I could say anything. But I think that not only all the nursing home, the nursing homes that we've talked about, but the state is constantly hiring every month for positions like this. And we are, we are desperately in need of it, so I'm all for it. Aye. Again, second aye.
Thank you. Ben Leonard, aye. Motion carries unanimously. That's great. Thank you for all of those action items. We're moving now into information items. We have one item, the presentation of curriculum improvement plans. Dr. Olson?
Yeah, I'm just going to, just again, give a bit of. You know, our, our rhythm in our curriculum improvement cycle, our, our normal pace was just blowing up in the last six weeks. Because in a normal year, in early April, we would be polishing off our curriculum improvement plans and reports and action plans and recommendations for those particular areas. And then they would be shared with the Instructional Program Committee. And then they would be studied at a study session, and then they would come back to the full board for approval. So that rhythm all changed as we got thrown into the distance learning mode. And so, Annette, maybe I'll just let you update the group because those three areas are kind of in your wheelhouse and kind of what we're.
Sure. I, that's interesting that you say they're in my wheelhouse. It's CTE and FIED, but I am the, I'm the administrator responsible for those groups as far as their, their curriculum process is concerned. And they are, they're exactly where they, where they should have been about a month ago. And then this, the distance learning, distance learning started and it kind of put, put all other work aside and, and sort of at a standstill. But they will, they'll be given two half-days in early, early June. So you will be hearing from representatives from those depart, from those three depart, three areas at the June School Board Meeting.
And our, you know, the, the curriculum improvement plans are, you know, really completed, but again, need to be polished up a bit. The goal would be then to share the current technical education improvement plan and the FIED improvement plan with the Instructional Improvement Committee. And then, and to share the co-curricular program plan with the co-curricular committee prior to the June 15th Board Meeting, when we would present those plans. So it's kind of a truncated process, but boy, I'll tell you, it's, it's where we're at. And our, our teachers have, we didn't feel like we could throw one more thing on top of them in terms of trying to get these plans done when they were in the middle of all of this distance learning work.
Yeah, exactly. And they, they have shared documentation up until this point with us. And, and we're comfortable with, with all of it and looking forward to presenting in June. And I'm trying to get my cat out of the screen right now, so. Good thing I can multitask.
I've seen a lot of cat butts over our stay-at-home order and Zoom meetings and things. Any, any initial, any further discussion, I guess? Any questions? Thank you so much for that. I think that takes us to reports. So building principles. Teve, you're on the screen. You're ready to go. Do you want to start?
I'm ready to roll. So things continue to click along here in early childhood. As we mentioned earlier in the budget report, our school readiness classes continue. Our ECFE classes continue, and those are part of the '04 budget. And then our course, our Early Childhood Special Education Services, continue. Teachers report good participation, and the families cannot be online during the actual presentation. They're picking that up later in the day when it works into their schedule. So we appreciate that, and we've had good communication with our families. Our teachers and staff members continue to do outreach, both online through phone calls. We have teachers making deliveries and having distance, appropriately distance conversations with families and kids. And what a day brightener that is for everybody to connect again. We also have our staff working on sending little notes and letters to kids. And we've got just a ton of feedback about how important that's been for our students to get those messages from, those adults from our program. So that's been great. This Thursday, Early Childhood is joining South and North with a little drive-through event. So we'll have between 6 o'clock and 7 o'clock on Thursday. Our staff will be onsite at the Early Childhood Center, appropriately distanced on the sidewalks as families can drive through and give a little wave and a honk and let them know exactly how much we miss them, and we hope they're doing well. So we're hoping to have good participation for that. We continue to look at the end of the year, and I know Ms. Ingeldinger and the staff at the high school has been working tremendously hard to think about graduation. But there are those milestones for other, our, our younger learners as well. And so that preschool graduation is a big event for families. And so we're trying to think of some little ways, certainly we won't be having a graduation, but some little ways that we can have, do something special here at the end of the year for those kids who are moving up to the big kindergarten classroom. So lots of work there. And then in another hat, in food service, we continue to distribute over 2,000 meals per day. That's breakfast and lunch that's being distributed each onsite and through our bus deliveries. We are also working to determine what summer food programming will look like. In the past, we've had our read and feed program. So that, that summer food will continue, but the way in which it's distributed may look different this year. So we'll continue to keep you posted on that. And that's what I have.
All right. We are continuing to adjust or monitor and adjust kind of based on feedback that we received from our distance learning survey. And we really did use last Friday to look at how we want to move forward with our distance learning plan from now until the end of the school year. And I think one of our big ahas was taking a look at the amount of time that our parents reported back that their students were spending on distance learning and realizing that it was maybe a little bit longer than we had hoped that it would be. So we did scale back some of our activities, and we will be providing that information to our parents to let them know that that's, that's the reason why we heard what they were saying. And we will scale back, back a little bit. So that is what last Friday was used for, was planning then for the month of May. And then we spent today really developing those plans, as you talked about. What are the things that we need to get done between now and the end of the school year? Things such as the master schedule for next year, even though there is some question about what that might look like, class list development, just big things like wrapping up enrollment for kindergarten. So one of the things, in addition to doing the Hello Parade, Saint Strong event, I believe is what we are entitled Thursday night, the drive-through. We're also having one next Thursday night for kindergartens, specifically for kindergarteners that will be coming to South next year. And again, it's just an opportunity for them to come, even though they can't get out and talk to us, to just drive through, see the school grounds, and hopefully collect a few more of those registration papers and distribute some of the packet materials that we were hoping to get out during our roundup. Get it to hold it. So that, along with, I think it's important for us to, especially important this year, to recognize that this week is Teacher Appreciation Week and Wednesday is Teacher Appreciation Day. So I think this is the weirdest teacher appreciation year ever just because normally they're here in the building and we're able to really thank them. As our teacher, and then we know that, what an important role that they play. And that's it for South.
Greetings from North Elementary, everybody. Much of what Dorian just said is going to be echoed at North. We had a productive, we're calling it halftime to the distance learning experience. A lot of productive conversations, meetings. Some of the, some of the topics that we covered during our halftime to distance learning. We're grading practices during distance learning. How do we, how do you facilitate those? Obviously, teachers are thinking about like reporting practices. So a lot of great conversations about what's fair and equitable report card practices, along with the state recommendations, or getting that finalized kind of as we speak. Also, just making adjustments and work expectations, especially students who receive additional stuff like language acquisition, goals that they're working on, or maybe IEP goals that they're working on. Just being really mindful, adjusting the amount of time that students receive to complete those. And so staff are working so, so closely with the families. Great cooperation and collaboration going to the halftime point here. We expect that to continue on. Alrighty, as, as Dorian talked about, one of our big rocks is transitioning students into the building. Our incoming second graders usually have orientation evenings that are scheduled at this time of the year. Obviously, those can't take place. But the second grade team and myself are working on some great transitioning events and resources that will be available to our incoming second graders. You know, one just, you know, probably be shifting to a kind of an open house night in August. We just, we really want the students to get the building and their, the second grade teachers to themselves before, you know, the other grade levels come in. So that's kind of the key foundational aspect of some kind of orientation. Get the kind of the rhythm of the building. And then also some kind of a resource that gets them acquainted to the building, even though they can't physically be there right now. And I know my staff is, is very super excited about Saint Strong event on Thursday night from 6:00 to 7:00. I know all sorts of plans in place. Teachers and staff members just want to see the kids' faces, and I, I know the same thing is happening on the family and the student side. But just make sure, you know, I've heard some events like this that have taken place in other communities have caused some traffic jamming to occur. So we do have St. Peter's finest on hand to make sure they direct traffic from building to building to building appropriately. And like I said, pretty cool that Teacher Recognition Week is happening. And then that's going to be an, an event that takes place during Teacher Recognition. So a nice little piggybacking of a lot of praise that should be received on both sides. And that's it for North.
And it's middle school. We've spent the last two days, Friday and Monday, doing the same as every other building, really monitoring, adjusting our progress. A lot of collaboration between teachers and teams, really trying to mass produce our strengths and adjust those things that need improvement on. Our focus has really been on the consistency of delivery. You know, we're, as mentioned last time that we met, really that first age level where kids are getting multiple teachers. So being able to balance the workload and the different styles of teachers throughout that Google Classroom. Another thing we're fine tuning is just that workload, ensuring that we have enough rigor to keep it engaging, but not too much where it's debilitating. We're also developing an equitable grading scale to take into account, you know, the struggles that come with this distance learning. We are finalizing a process for students to come, students to pick up personal belongings. As you know, the abruptness of the school closure left many, many personal belongings in lockers. So we've had a great deal of staff members coming in, spread throughout the building and cleaning out lockers and bagging up student belongings. And we're going to have a pickup day that will look very similar to the device pickup day, where we kind of a curmudgeon pickup drive-through situation. And more information to come on that when we get our dates set. And then lastly, you know, our, our big focus right now is thinking about those transitions. One of those transitions is the incoming fifth grade orientation, which will normally take place in person right around this time of the year. Mrs. Dozy and the fifth grade crew have been working really hard to create a virtual event. And that's kind of in its final stages. That event will take place on May 12th, and families will receive a link to that event in the upcoming days.
Okay, lots going on at the high school, or at least about the high school. Last week on Thursday, we had a, we had a cap and gown drive-through, drive-through delivery for our seniors, and it was a pretty amazing day. It was, it was, it was extra special to see those seniors getting to see their, their teachers, their teachers getting to see them, probably meant even more to the teachers. Everybody was, was super upbeat, which was great to see. They got their caps and gowns and some other goodies passed out by, by their teachers who are missing them terribly. So that was, it was, it was probably the most perfect weather day we've had so far, which I think was meant to be. And, and it was, it was just pretty amazing to see all of those kids. We have spent the last two workdays, Friday and Monday, monitoring and adjusting our, our distance learning plans. And, and I, I have to say thank you especially to Paulette Topol, who was finishing out her, her three-year stint as our TOSA. She, she has really taken on the role of, she's taken on the, the graduate profile and anything, anything having to do with innovation and innovative delivery of instruction. And so, so we've had, we've had actually a really great two days sort of together from afar. We've had teachers who have offered to host roundtable discussions based on, on topics that have come up via, because of distance learning, as well as putting together a virtual bingo board of staff wellness activities to get through before the end of the school year, which, which was really fun for, for teachers to see each other even through a screen and participate in some kind of fun activities. So thank you especially to Paulette Topol and those teachers who volunteered. We've been going over the results of both student and parent surveys based on the first weeks of, of distance learning. And, and that, those were some of the things that we talked about over the last two, two workdays, especially the results of the student surveys. And Mr. Graff alluded to it as well, that a lot of the discussion was concerning workload for kids. And, and what we're finding is that, based on those surveys, that our distance learning plans are working really well for a lot of kids and maybe even the majority of kids, but there's still a lot of kids who are struggling either with access or, or with the amount of work, just managing, managing multiple classes and different teachers and different teacher styles. And so, so we spent a lot of time talking about how to, how to manage workflow, both, both from the teacher end and the students. So, so we had some really good conversations around that. And lastly, of course, every, everybody is, is waiting for information on those big events that, that happen at a high school every spring that are, that are actually really important. And, and most of us would, while, while we are here for learning and instruction, we all know that that senior final quarter of school is about a lot of other things as well, including some events that, that make some really great memories. And so while we know that's not going to be the same as it, as it has been for every other graduating class probably in the history of St. Peter High School, this, this class of 2020. probably in the history of St. Peter High School, this, this class of 2020 is a resilient bunch. And we, we're doing our best to plan some really special activities and events for them. And my dog didn't bark once during that entire report.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. Dr. Olson? You're muted.
Sorry about that. Just wanted to echo what Mrs. Engeldinger said, you know, when, when, when graduation speeches are made, it's very common to say, "This class is like no other class that has ever graduated from," fill in the blank, "St. Peter High School" or whatever. This class is, will be like no other class that has ever graduated from St. Peter High School, because they'll have a unique set of experiences that always haven't been pleasant, but it really have allowed them to figure out how to have that bounce back mentality or that true grit mentality that we really hope our students have as they carry them into their adult lives. So that being said, I want to mention two things. The first, we will be updating our distance learning plans tomorrow based on information that have, that we've dealt with at all of the sites and in the district learning plan as a whole. And really, there are two primary areas there. The first is communication pathways. And the communication pathways are just really identifying all of the various ways of communicating with students, with parents, with the public about distance learning and online learning as, as we have moved forward over the past several weeks and will continue to move forward over the remainder of the year. And then secondly, the principals all talked about the fact that grading practices have been reviewed. We received information from the Minnesota Department of Education late Friday about their guidance and direction as far as grading practices. And I think our principals could jump in here, but as our, our team has reviewed grading practices with staff, received input from others, we're right on target. So we really have a modified A through B, C grading scale at the middle school and high school and more of a pass fail, although with some different terms in place for our K4 students. One of the things that we're really stressing is we're going to do everything in our power not to have students punished in any way, shape, or form because of things that are out of their control in terms of technology access, the ability to, you know, receive the assistance they might normally need to receive in order to be successful. So our grading practices will reflect that. And we will bring, we will need to have board action on those grading practices at our May 18th board meeting, because you have formally approved our grading scales and practices through the adoption of student handbooks last fall. So I'd encourage you to take a good look at, at those updated distance learning plans for both, for all sites in the district. But I think that our, our teams, our principals and our staff have done a really good job of taking that guidance and direction from the Minnesota Department of Education and moving forward with it. The second item I want to talk about is one that really is a, a look ahead kind of thing. A number of districts that I've visited with and in doing lots of thinking and talking with our administrative team have started to think about what return to school action plans would look like for 2020, 2021. And it is, I've alluded to earlier, there are at least three, maybe four, maybe five scenarios that we could begin to lay out. So I think it's important that we start doing some, at least general planning to have on the shelf, if you will, an action-ready plan for any of those scenarios. It doesn't have to be super in-depth, but it does need to be comprehensive in terms of its scope or look at those different scenarios. One of the things I visited with Chair Leonard about today is the possibility of having an ad hoc board, school board committee that would be titled, "The Return to School 2020-2021 Committee", because I think it's important that we involve board members in those discussions about what those scenarios look like. We also would have a series of a task force, a district-wide task force, really led by school administrators, and then a series of subcommittees or subtask force groups looking at everything from instruction to logistics. So I just saw for an example on a news report today about, in Germany, a return to school on an every-other-day format with proper social distancing and, you know, transportation and so forth. My goodness, there are a lot of logistics that need to be worked out as, as you think about that kind of plan. Not the least of which might be, how do you have social distancing on a school bus where you would normally have, let's say, 60 students on a bus at one time? That's not going to work. Or in a cafeteria for breakfast or for lunch, or in classrooms where we typically would have maybe 25, at the secondary level, up to 30 students in a classroom. A social distancing six feet apart doesn't work in those settings. So you'd really have to think through those logistics of how those kinds of things might occur. And there are many other things as well. So just wanted to put that idea out there of an ad hoc school board committee, much like any of our other committees, that would be focused on return to school 2020-2021. So I'll open it up to any questions or comments or thoughts that anybody might have. That's wait time, and that's good for me, Ben.
Okay. Thank you. So now we have the board update on community graduation plans, a parade. I think there are some local community members who are doing some things on their own, and, and we wanted to hear about it.
Hi. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Emily Soderland. And I'm going to try to get through this without crying, but I don't think it's going to happen. I am the tremendously proud mother of my twin daughters, Emma and Kayla, who are graduating from the St. Peter High School this year. Back in March, when Governor Walz told schools across the state of Minnesota to prepare for distance learning, I saw the writing on the wall. As a parent, I felt heartbroken for my daughters, who have worked so hard and were looking forward to the exiting events that come with senior spring. Their last sporting season, their last choir concert, their last prom, their last few being together with their classmates and teachers, and finally, the grand finale, their graduation. I started asking myself, what can I do to lessen this blow for my girls? What can we as a community do to show our, our entire St. Peter school board, or our entire St. Peter High School graduating class of 2020, the love and support they need and deserve? An idea was born. Between myself and another senior parent, a Facebook group was created. This group was started to share ideas on how to show support for our seniors and has since evolved to over 500 members. And these are not just senior parents. The members are our senior students, St. Peter community residents, parents of students who have children of different age levels, and business owners. What started with an idea to paint a message of support in our windows has exploded into countless ways the community has stepped up to honor all of the students in the 508 district. Yard signs, Christmas lights, and ribbons around trees was only the beginning. Today, myself and a small group of parents have been working on two, on organizing two events, events on a much, much larger scale. I have been in almost daily communication with the St. Peter City Administrator, Todd Pravky. Ed Lee with the St. Peter Area Chamber of Commerce has also volunteered his expertise and his experience to help plan these events. Additionally, I have been in touch with the St. Peter Police Department, the St. Peter Lions Club, the St. Peter Herald, several active members within the senior support group, and with RES pyrotechnics. The first event is a senior parade, which pending city council approval on May 11th, will take place on May 26th at 6:00 PM. The details of what this looks like are still being hashed out, but ideally, the community will be able to park along the parade route to recognize, honor, and celebrate our graduating class. The radio station, Hot 96.7, has also agreed to join the celebration. We will encourage the students and their families to decorate their vehicles. We will also ask that the spectators make signs, honk their horns, clap, do whatever they, whatever they think to make this the biggest celebration for our graduating class. We also are aware that there are students who do not have a car. And for these families, we have a list of volunteers who would be happy to drive them along the route. A parade is an amazing way during these uncertain times that we can show our support to the seniors while practicing social distancing. We would like the board's approval to begin and end the parade at the high school parking lot. The second event is a fireworks show, which we are hoping can take place at the high school as well. Pending city and school board approval, this event will take place on May 29th at 9:30 PM. As you know, May 29th is graduation day. The COVID-19 pandemic has robbed our seniors of a traditional graduation ceremony. While a virtual graduation seems the only way we can honor and celebrate our students, I think as a community, we can add to the crescendo by putting on a May, a Fourth of July fireworks show, not only for our graduating class of 2020, but for all the students in District 508 in support of all the teachers and school administration and staff, for all the parents who have supported their children in distant learning, and for the entire town of St. Peter. My vision is to allow the graduating class to attend the fireworks show at the high school parking lot. This would require the school's support as well as help from the St. Peter Police Department as not to promote social interactions and keeping, and keeping the students' safety first. The St. Peter Lions Club has agreed to hold all donations for this event. The target amount is $12,000, which I believe we can raise in no time. The board's support for these events and your personal monetary donations will be very appreciated. On a personal note, I'm going to cry. Emma and Kayla are my firstborn children. Watching them grow up has been the light of my life. While they have adjusted to the circumstances laid upon them, they are by no means doing great. They miss their friends, they miss their teachers, Emma misses her parents. They miss their dad and their grandparents, and they are saddened to think that their senior year has been lost to the chaos surrounding COVID-19. We have cried together many times, and as a parent, I have done my best to reassure them that someday this will be over. As a parent, I have felt helpless. And as a member of this community, I can't help but to think so many children and parents are feeling the same things our family has. But I am an optimist, and when I have a vision of how to make things better, I try my best to make it happen. Our students, teachers, and parents have been faced with adversity, but the senior parade and the fireworks show are ways we as a community and as a school can set the bar incredibly high for our neighboring towns. If anyone does plan something on this scale, it will be at the heels of St. Peter. The parade will get coverage from KEYC, and I think the fireworks show will get coverage from around the state. These events may be the last time that the seniors are able to be together. These events will help the students feel appreciated, respected, honored, and loved. These events will certainly become the memories and the stories our students take away from the COVID pandemic. And most importantly, these events will celebrate our St. Peter High School seniors who have worked their entire lives for graduation day. Our group has the support of our city administrator, Ed Lee, and the Lions Club. I am now asking for the support and cooperation of the St. Peter School Board. Let's show our student, what students, what it means to go out with, go out with a bang. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Olson, do you want to jump in or?
At least a few, I froze up.
Yeah, you're good now.
Yeah, we've had some conversations. I think that, that the big things we, we would just need to make sure of is that we've got the, you know, proper liability certificates from anybody who's going to be doing pyrotechnics. And that, you know, we've, we've covered, and I'm not sure if Tim is still on or not, but we also want to make sure that, you know, we have the details of what a parade starting and ending in a parking lot would look like. And, you know, we, we certainly do things like that for homecoming and other things. I would have one question, Emily. Is the, is the idea that there would be an adult in the car with the graduating seniors, like a parent in the parade, or what's the thought there?
I think so. I mean, I think for all of this to happen, it's going to be definitely, families are going to have to step in and maybe put the kids in the back of a truck, maybe make a parade float. I'm not really sure. We'll leave that creativity up to the families. But yeah, I mean, ideally, a parent would be able to drive them.
I think that's something that, or at least be in the car with them. I think I've seen something like that. So we didn't, wouldn't end up having, you know, multiple seniors jumping in a car together and...
Right. We absolutely, I know I didn't touch on it incredibly in-depth in, in what I just said, but social distancing and the safety of the students and of the community has definitely been at the upfront of all of the planning in this. And how, what is this going to look like and how can we make this happen? So as the details roll out to me, as I keep communicating with all the people I mentioned, we are working very hard to kind of come up with a solid foundation, a solid plan as how we can make this happen for our seniors.
Well, I think it's really important that...
I also just wanted to say too, as far as the pyrotechnic company is concerned, have a contract in place and they, it will be issuing a certificate or its dollar liability insurance policy.
Perfect. Yeah, we just got to, you know, obviously, we've got to cover those, those legal
Oh, yep.
scenarios there. But I think making a special time at the end of the year for our seniors is really incredible. And it just shows the kind of support. I've always believed that we have an extremely supportive community and group of parents and community members all across. And this is another good example of that, for sure. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Emily. Dr. Olson, would we be looking at this as, as like a facility rental of the park and that kind of situation? I don't think that requires a school board vote. Or it would be community use of a park, right, is what I'm trying to get at?
I think we could probably work this through. And again, I think the question might be, if we're out at the Community Spirit Park, kind of at the, at the high school the kids are actually graduating from, that could end up, I'm not sure where the, where the fireworks display would be. That could end up being on the city-owned portion of the property. So we would, we would need to just make sure that we have our, you know, a good, solid plan in place for cars coming into the parking lot to observe that, that fireworks display. But I think our, I think our facility use policy would cover that, both of those scenarios. But I mean, it's certainly, go ahead, Ben.
Oh, I'm just seeking some clarity. Emily, thank you very much. I really appreciate what you're doing and what the community is doing. I see this as a community effort to, to celebrate our St. Peter students and, and not necessarily a school district graduation. That's what I'm getting at, that this would be a community use of that park, but not school district use of the park. Does that make sense?
Sure. And one, one other question, Emily, that I have, just, you know, how do we find out information about where donations are made?
So the St. Peter Lions Club has, has agreed to accept and hold all donations for the fireworks event. You can simply write out a check to the St. Peter Lions Club. They just are asking that you write fireworks in the memo line. Additionally, the treasurer of the Lions Club is trying to set up a Venmo. She's not incredibly tech savvy, so I've been trying to walk her through that so people would be able to make virtual donations as well.
Well, I'm, I'm interested in the check thing myself, because I'm not particularly tech savvy either, so.
Yeah, we're trying to cover, we're definitely trying to cover everybody and how to accept those donations. So they're working on that. Also, if you wanted to drop something off at Hometown Bank, you can, that's where their account is, so you can do it that way as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I closed my iPad, but I think we're, we're on to Around the Table. Is that correct?
Board member reports around the table, sorry.
Excellent. Tracy, we'll start with you.
Um, I just want to just thank all the teachers that have been putting in just an extraordinary amount of work. I just know from my needy children how much teacher time they consume, and I can only imagine, you know, taking that time, you know, two hundred or however many kids that the middle school and high school kids, specific teachers would have. But the other thing is, a question more towards Mrs. Engeldinger, maybe Dr. Olson, when are we finding out what graduation will actually look like? I know people keep, like, asking me, and like, I really don't know anything either, but, but like, the big things are like, you know, I don't know, they're trying to figure out, do you send out an invitation, or is there something that people will be able to tune into, or when are we going to find these things out?
Uh, Dr. Olson, I can, in all of the communication from the, from Dr. Olson in the last couple of weeks, he made mention for the timeline for communication that that information is going out to parents and students tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
I think one of the things, one of the things for all, really, the entire board is that what we're hearing very loudly and clearly from the governor's office, from the Minnesota Department of Health, from the Minnesota Department of Education, is that we need to follow all of the social distancing guidelines, the size-of-a-crowd guideline, et cetera, and you probably will see from time to time stories about what different districts or high schools around Minnesota are doing. But the last call that I was on with the Department of Education and the governor's office, at the present time, and it doesn't look like that's going to change, you know, the crowd number is ten, social distancing has to occur. So if you just think about it in a very simplistic way, we have a hundred and eighty graduates, and there are two people that are allowed into a graduation ceremony, whether or not that's at a football field or anyplace else, you're, and you've got a school board and others there, you know, well over five hundred people. That just doesn't work. So that's an unfortunate situation, for sure, and one that nobody likes, but I know in, in visiting a lot with Mrs. Engeldinger and hearing reports from her team, the goal is to have the highest-quality graduation event that's virtual that we can possibly have. It's, in order to make that happen, it's going to require that we start moving forward, probably would you agree, Mrs. Engeldinger, next week, with some of the ways of involving our high school students and parents in graduation, and more to come, but...
Yes, yes, stay tuned for some very detailed, very detailed messaging coming to seniors and their parents in the next few days.
And then in that messaging, because it's the other thing I've been hearing a lot of, too, is there, this is what, I'm not saying that this is what I'm thinking, because honestly, I don't even know what I'm thinking, but is, you know, we rescheduled prom, but we're not rescheduling graduation. That seems to be a hot button for people as to why that is, like, so prom is more important? I don't really think that's the reason. Like, what is the reason for rescheduling prom and not rescheduling graduation?
I think one of the things that we, we tried to be very clear on all along is that, you know, graduation, we want to make sure, first of all, let me, first of all, say that there may be an opportunity to have an event honoring our graduates later on, depending upon what happens with rules, but graduation is the one event where every student that's earned the right to have a diploma has earned the right to participate in the graduation exercise at the same level as anyone else. And I can assure you that if we waited, tried to have a graduation in the middle of July, we would have a significant number of students, ten, twenty, thirty, forty, whatever number it would be, that may not be able to participate in that graduation ceremony. So this way, we assure that everybody that's earned a diploma has the same, same exact experience, even though it's not an ideal experience, as anyone else who's earned the diploma, and we can hopefully get all one hundred and eighty students and their parents involved in some way, shape, or form in that particular ceremony that we want to have.
Yeah. I'll try to recap that into a, when people, because that is the, that is the thing that I hear is that, and I'm like, honestly, I really don't know, because I don't, I mean, I'm just like, I don't really know.
So Tracy, if you want to, if you, tomorrow, there'll be new, new information out, but tomorrow afternoon, but if you wanted to just refer people back to the, to the initial letter that was sent out to the, to the parents of seniors, it explained what a virtual cer, the reasons for a virtual ceremony, just like Dr. Olson said, that every student deserves to have their friends and family all hear their names read and see them, see them accept their diploma, and, and we have, we have several students who are leaving for the military shortly after May twenty-ninth, who would be automatically out if, if we could meet later in the summer, and, and none of this is to say that we won't be hosting other celebratory graduation, graduation events in the summer if we can, if we can meet. And again, it's such a moving target that we just have to be for May twenty-ninth.
And thank you, Annette, and just to add on, I, I think that it's going to be really hard to decide when it's okay to reschedule something, and so this is really our opportunity to, to honor the class of 2020, and, you know, it's not maybe in a way that we would, we would like, or that we would choose, but this is our opportunity, and, you know, we could say, well, let's wait until June, and June's still not okay. We could say, wait until July. A few minutes ago, we were talking about the idea of social distancing in the fall, so I think it's really hard to say this is a date where this is all going to be okay. I'm sure, like, all the rest of you, I was reading news earlier today, the White House has an own, their own internal prognosticators that are saying, by June, we could have three thousand people dying a day. We've got one to two thousand now, so it, it might not get better for a really long time, and I would hate to not take this opportunity to create the best moment for these graduates that we can, and I, I have no idea what they're going through. I didn't have to go through this at their age. I did miss my college graduation because I was in the hospital for cancer treatment, and I, I know what that did to me, so I have a lot of empathy for these kids, but I think we're all, we're all doing the best we can.
Yeah. I think it was just, I think it was just the prom thing that kind of threw people, honestly, and not that I'm saying they shouldn't, you know what I mean? I think that was just, like, them people trying to get that figured out in their head. So I'm done. Have a good night, everybody. I think everybody's doing awesome.
Well, and I think, too, I think like Ben was talking about what was going on with him, and we, even for a funeral, you can't have any more than ten people out there, and so it's just trying to figure out how you're going to do all that, and then to, again, say, you know, down the road, we're going to have something down the road. When is that going to be possible? So yeah, it is just a confusing situation, and we're all kind of in it.
Thank you, Vicky. I can tell how long this meeting has gone based on the fact that it used to be very light-out where you are, and now it is not.
Yes, it's getting darker.
Drew, do you have anything?
Not tonight, thank you.
John?
Yeah, just one thing. I think tomorrow at two o'clock, the, the state budget forecast comes out, and that's going to tell us a lot. It's going to really have an impact on, I, I don't, anybody's expecting good news, so I, I, I think it's going to have a big impact on funding well into the future, depending upon how bad it is. So look, check your news tomorrow after two o'clock, we'll know.
Yes, thank you. Anyone looking for more bad news can definitely get some in that forecast. Vicky, do you have anything else?
Nope. All I need to say is thanks, everybody, for all your hard work.
Thank you. Tim?
Nope, I got nothing, Ben, thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
I just want to say thank you for allowing Emily to give her presentation. I just want to say I'm really proud of that young lady.
Absolutely. Thank you, Bill, and thank you, Emily. I just had a couple of things, shouldn't be more than thirty minutes, no, I'm just kidding. I wanted to thank all of the teachers. This is a really weird teacher appreciation week, but I think it just underscores the amount of talent and enthusiasm and passion and flexibility and creativity that we have in St. Peter with our teachers, and, and I thank them so much, and I am so sorry that they have to try and teach my kids how to learn in this environment, so thank you. I also want to give a shout out to the middle school and to State History Day. State History Day was over the weekend, it happened virtually, but we had four students from St. Peter that participated, Emily and Sarah Heinz, and Callum and Roy Hendrickson, Callum Harms and Roy Hendrickson actually made it to the finals, which happened last night, and received an honorable mention for their participation in State History Day, which I think is the, the highest that St. Peter students have achieved so far in History Day, and there are hundreds of projects, and this year especially was a crazy year, so I really respect and appreciate those four kids for continuing to work on their project and for participating in state, so thank you.
Ben, just one last thing. I think I also want to thank the teachers for, the one thing is, this seems to have turned into a seven-day-a-week, anytime-a-kid-wants type of job, and the fact that, I mean, teachers I've talked to are getting emails on Sunday afternoons, you know, and, and the cool thing is, is they take enough pride in what they do that they respond. They, they will respond to kids whenever they need them, and I think it's, you know, example 5,720 of why we have such a great staff.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Anything else? That's a, that's a great note, to call for a motion to adjourn. No one wants to.
Make a motion to adjourn. Vicky Hager, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Tracy Stewie, aye.
Great, thank you, Vicky and Tracy. Bill?
Bill Soderland, aye.
Thank you. Tim?
Tim Locascurt, aye.
Thank you, Tim. Vicky?
Vicky Hager, aye.
Thank you. John?
John Carlton, aye.
Thank you. Drew?
Drew Dixon, aye.
Thank you. Tracy?
Tracy Stewie, aye.
Thank you. Ben Leonard, aye. Motion carries unanimously. The meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.